... 2022 special session. We are in order. And first up, discussion, approval, disapproval of Resolution Number 062722-ED. Resolution ordering the calling, or Resolution ordering and calling an election to be held on November 8th, 2022 on the imposition of transportation excise tax to fund the RTA, or the RT, Regional Transportation Plan. Mr. Liu, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know, I told you I'd forget that. Okay. And just to let everybody know that Supervisor Sertie is attending telephonically. See, I did write it, I just forgot to say it. Mr. Liu, you're up.
Thank you again. Yes, as you all are aware of, back in 2016, the voters approved Proposition 416 and 417. 416 was the Penile Regional Transportation Authority Plan, and 417 is a related tax. And as you know as well, the Supreme Court of the State, Superior Court of State had, Supreme Court of State had ruled that the tax was an illegal form. And so this resolution by the PRTA to call for an election in November is to bring back the tax for vote in illegal form. And I see Executive Director of the PRTA is here, as well as the chairman. I don't know if you had any words that anybody wanted to say from the PRTA. Please do, Mayor.
We wouldn't deny you some time to speak.
There we go. Well, good afternoon, Supervisors, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to speak on behalf of the PRTA as the chairman, and, number one, thank the county for all the work that they have done in the past. And then the unfortunate outcome of that was that the Supreme Court did deem the tax illegal, but the plan is legal. So this question that we're asking to put back on the ballot is to ask the voters to reapprove the corrected tax. So basically, this will be a new tax with the corrected language. And so appreciate your help on it. I also would like to make sure that you understand that as a board, we are going to work very hard also to make sure we reimburse the county for all the money that has been spent in the past. So I assure you that that will be my number-one priority, and so we'll work towards that. Just thank you again.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Does the board have any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Sertie.
So can Chris or someone give an update? Because I still have a bad feeling in my mouth about the dispersal of the funds that are, that have been raised. I don't believe those should go back to the retailers. If anything, they need to go back to the people. We, as a board, are the stewards of the people. So is there any updates on that?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Sertie. The only update that I have heard as of last week, and that was probably the beginning of the week, is that we are still waiting, or the public is still waiting, for forms from the Department of Revenue as to how to go ahead and seek reimbursement. We had checked to see where they were at, and they had not issued those forms yet. And so we're asking for an update from the Department of Revenue. That's, that's the only update I have I can provide.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
I will have a question later on. What is the next move?
The next?
In regards to the...
I mean, what's, I mean, is this the whole discussion on the whole issue, or?
This is, this is item number one. What, it's about putting the...
Okay. So this gets back on the ballot, we will inevitably be asked to give statements of support. And if I recall correctly, we will be doing that as private citizens. We can't do it in our positions as mayors or supervisors, correct? Back to Chris Keller, I believe.
That is correct. It's pro and con, you know, goes in the policy pamphlet.
So it would just be under our name if we choose to write something? You can't use a title at all?
And we can get back to you on that, what the appropriate title, or for what you're representing, as far as your district is concerned, but we can clear that up for you.
Okay. Thank you again.
Okay. Any other questions? Do you have a question now?
Well, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Keller, the significant change in the language went from being a tiered tax system to an even tax system. Is that correct, or could you explain that for the benefit of the public?
That is essentially correct. It was a tax, the last time it was up, up to a $10,000 mark, and then it was tiered and went to zero. And this is just a straight half-cent sales tax across the board now.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Going once, going twice. All right. Not seeing or hearing any, I would ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve item number one as presented.
How about a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Of a motion in two seconds. So, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right. Thank you. Item number two, discussion, approval, disapproval of Resolution Number 062722-LM, approving the development agreement between Penile County, City of Casa Grande, and Lucid USA Incorporated. And this is Mr. Liu again.
I'll start us off. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back, we had a public hearing back on May 18th related to the issuance of bonds for economic development land acquisition. And then, as we said, we were under a nondisclosure agreement, but that we would come back. And at the time of the resolution, we would be able to talk about who it is and what we're doing, and why we're doing it. And so today is that day. This particular item is on the development agreement, but we will talk about, I'll talk about some of the return on investment from an economic impact perspective. We have a company representative that will talk about their business and what they're doing. And then we have, Chris Keller will talk about our development agreement and how it protects the taxpayers' money. So I just want to give a few highlights. As you mentioned, this is Lucid Motors, and they are over at Thornton &amp; Peters in Casa Grande. We're looking at acquiring 1,366 acres to essentially build out the vision of what an OEM automobile manufacturer campus would look like in a normal basis. As you remember, we started earlier with the 500 acres. Now we're moving on to add this. We get closer to 2,000, which is about the standard. Enables a manufacturer to produce their full line and have a supplier park as well. Some of the highlights related to the economic impact of why we would get into this, when the full vision would be built out, where Lucid would be hiring over 6,000 direct jobs. And then when you add in the indirect and the induced jobs, over 20 years, on an annual basis, we'd be looking at over 30,000 jobs a year. The economic output over the 20 years to the economy is over $256 billion. The tax revenue over those 20 years, combined with the state, the city and the county, is over $1.9 billion. And then for Penile County, over $352 million over 20 years. So that, that's a little bit of the why we get into these types of enterprises and help to facilitate them. Mr. Daniel Witt is a representative of Lucid Motors and is here. Would like to show a few pictures and say a few words.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Daniel Witt, and I'm the Director of State Public Policy for Lucid. For those of you unfamiliar with Lucid or our operations in Casa Grande, we're currently tripling the square footage of the first purpose-built electric vehicle factory in U.S. history. The photos that we've supplied are showing the project as it currently is under construction and the relatively current state as of a couple days ago. Our first vehicle, the Lucid Air Sedan, won the 2022 Motor Trend Car of the Year earlier this year, and has been heralded for its industry-leading efficiency and impressive range exceeding 500 real-world miles. We currently have more than 2,000 employees working in Casa Grande, in addition to the construction employees affiliated with the current growth, and anticipate more than 3,000 full-time employees before the end of the year. Penile County is truly our global manufacturing hub, even as we continue to expand and grow our operations into other parts of the world. I'm here today to share our strong support for this resolution and the proposal, which we view to be of tremendous importance to our future in Arizona and the future of Penile County. As we seek to expand our product offerings globally, we must continue to grow here in Arizona, and we frankly require additional space to do so. It's worth emphasizing, we see this investment as securing the county's future as a national leader in vehicle electrification. As we expand, so too do the opportunities for a significant supplier network, as well as our own operations, to grow with us, which could potentially bring billions in investment and thousands of jobs into the state and Penile County specifically, some of which was captured in the economic impact report that was referenced by the county manager. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about our operations at the end of the presentation, but now turn this over to Chris Keller, who can share some additional details about the proposed resolution and proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members, if you recall, approximately this December four years ago, we entered into our first deal in 2018 with Lucid Motors, and we acquired the 500, just short, just short of 500 acres where they're currently at. As part of that agreement, it was a four-year lease with an option to purchase that they had to exercise in the last year. We have received, as of June 16th, a notice from Lucid that they are exercising that option to purchase those 500 acres that we currently are leasing to them. They had up until December 20th, December 19th to provide that notice. They provided it early, and they are looking to take that down and finalize that transaction around September 14th, as long as we can work the documents and so forth out. So we're in the process right now of going ahead and calculating the purchase price for that property, and that's based on the bond retirement amount, which was the actual costs and expenses the county incurred related to the defeasance of the bonds. When we took out the, the first bond issuance, it was roughly 30, 31 million for that, that 500 acres back in 2018. And again, they had lease payments that they made, they have made all those lease payments, and they also had another escrow account that was provided to the county to cover the cost of improvements that they were making on that site that would benefit the county should something, you know, go wrong and fault. So the county would have been left with an improved site. As I said, they are in the process now, along with us, of determining that purchase price, and we will be closing hopefully on that, coming back to you to transfer title in September to Lucid for those 500 acres. This deal, this time around, is essentially the same type of structure as that last one, just larger. This deal is, again, as Mr. Liu said, you know, 1366 acreage. It again is a four-year lease with an option to purchase at the end of those four years, with a notice provision six months before that time period. And as in the last, we've had this property appraised, and by statute, we're required to get the fair market rental rate, and we got to get at least 90% of that value, but not more than 100% of the rental rate. And in this situation, that rental rate is $7,118,353. And our lease currently has it at rental payments, they will be giving us, of $7,100,000. So we are at 99% essentially of the fair market rental rate for the property based on the appraisal. So again, that's at four years. And in addition to the, the four years of lease payments, we have required Lucid to, within three days of the transaction, or within the county taking down the property, to deposit into escrow to protect the county that first year's lease payments. $7,100,000 is what they're going to put down in an escrow account for covering lease should something default on that time period. In addition, there's going to be an additional, what I would call, an improvement escrow. And, and that amount is going to be 5.4 million that Lucid is putting into an escrow account to improve that site. Out of that escrow, when Lucid does improvements to the, the site, whether it is, you know, scraping the dirt, bringing utilities, bringing water lines, or whatever that might be, to make it a usable site, because essentially, right now, it's pretty much farmland, is what it, what the majority of that property is. They will be able to seek reimbursement from that escrow account for the improvements, to pay for those, up to $5.4 million. So at the end, should something happen, the county would be left with a site that's improved, be very more, much more marketable, and we would also have that $7 million plus in escrow for the lease payments on that. In addition to the lease and option to purchase, we have a development agreement similar to what we did in the previous arrangement. And it's a three-party development agreement between the county, Lucid, and City of Casa Grande. This one is, is actually a little smaller, if you will. There are no requirements in there for certain roads and infrastructures and the type that were initially in the first plant, in the first agreement, I should say. But there are some things in there, such as processing and moving towards annexation, you know, applying for rezoning applications through the city, processing the development plans, and certain, from the city, certain wastewater per gallon reservation capacities and the like that are in there. So previously, you know, these agreements, the first one and this one, the county had the authority under the economic development statutes to expand for economic development that would assist in creating and improving the economic welfare of the citizens or inhabitants of Penile County. And as a result, I think you could easily see that the 2,000-plus jobs that they've already created and the additional suppliers and manufacturers, such as even the LG plant coming over to Queen Creek, is bringing in those additional jobs and supply chains for the county. So from, from that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on the development agreement. It's a very high-level, at this point in time, presentation on my part. We believe legally there's all the justification. We have dotted the i's and crossed the t's, and we believe that the county is well protected.
All right. Are there any questions from the board? Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Keller, you said if something were to happen, what would that something be?
Yeah, that could be anything from, you know, a filing for bankruptcy, a takeover, anything of the like. It's hard to say in the business world what might happen. It could be, you know, any kind of a shortage, that, you know, they, operations would stall for a while. But what we really try to protect against is any type of a, of a bankruptcy-type of situation for the county. And one of the things that's a little bit different from this time, from the last time, is Lucid at that time was, I'll say, a privately-held company. And as now, they're a public, they have, you know, stockholders and the like. So there is a lot more disclosure, a lot more requirements that they do, and frankly, you know, the ability to also, to go to the capital market, which was not as easy the first time around. So that's why we think we're, we're better protected this time.
And you said if something were to happen, operations would stall, like supply chain issues, anything like that?
I'm, I'm not an expert in the, the automobile manufacturing thing, so that might be a question better asked of Lucid. But again, we're just trying to anticipate any types of those hiccups, if you might.
Well, I am concerned because we, we incorrectly wrote the tax issue that we spoke about in the previous item, and I want to make sure that we do this correctly. So those are some of my concerns, and I do have some questions for Lucid when we get to Representative.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Keller? I believe we have a question for you, sir. Mr. Cavanaugh, Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you. So we talked earlier about it being prudent in Lucid's business model for Penile County to issue a bond, so that sort of puts the taxpayers on the hook with debt to assist in the expansion of Lucid Motors. So what do the county taxpayers get in return? We talked about jobs. We talked about economic activity 20 years into the future. I believe you heard our county manager say that, perhaps you said, 350-some million dollars in tax revenue over 20 years. Is that, did I hear that right?
I believe that came from our economic impact report, but that came from the county manager.
And so our debt load on this is roughly 125 million. Are you familiar with that number?
Yes.
And then our, the total interest on this bond is about 350, did I read that right? Did you have that number?
I unfortunately don't have the papers confirming, but I think that there's probably somebody that can corroborate that.
Okay. So I have some concerns, because I don't think it's the role of government to invest to, for the specific purpose of buying land for a company. And Lucid Motors is fantastic, they make fantastic products, but I'm concerned that this isn't the role of government to, to purchase land for the specific use and benefit of one company. And Lucid, you, what's the, what's the projection on production for this year?
So I believe we stated previously that we're going to be around 12,000 to 14,000 vehicles, but I do have to caution, just because we're in a quiet period due to being so close to the end of the quarter, that I'm unable to provide any further guidance beyond that.
And that, that estimate's down from 20-some thousand earlier. Is that correct?
Correct.
And presumably, supply chain is impacting Lucid now?
Yes. Again, I have to be very deferential to these SEC regulations, so I apologize.
It says it on your, it says it on the Lucid website.
Yeah.
But this discussion is for the benefit of the public.
Yep.
So, and earlier you said Lucid obtained the 500 acres, and it was, essentially Lucid was a startup. Now, Lucid has about $6 billion in cash reserves, is that correct?
That's correct.
So my question is, why is it that Lucid simply can't use some of their cash reserves and just buy this property on their own?
Yeah. Well, as we spoke about previously, we see this as a time where there's both a great opportunity and the need for prudence. We're staring in the face of supply chain challenges, which you alluded to, while also looking at trying to execute a plan that ultimately provided that capital that we're now, that we're now measured against. That capital is meant to go towards our expansion into the European markets and allow for us to begin to deliver not only throughout North America, but throughout the European continent as well. To do that, we need to not only establish the sales and service network, but to also expand our manufacturing capability, which you, as you can see, is undergoing. So much of those funds are obligated. We've previously stated that we have enough funding out of our existing cash balance to go at least through another year. And so I, I, I'll circle back to just say that those funds are obligated, and that other opportunities that have emerged, like the opportunity to aggregate and solidify our, our presence here in Arizona, frankly, is, is something that we see as, as being a, we, we see it as being something that is in the county's interests as well as our own to, to capture the lightning in the bottle.
And so the land, in your estimation, it's important that we move quickly because others could purchase this property. Is that, is that fair?
Some, yes, yeah. As you're familiar with, this, this parcel is made up of many other sub-parcels, and so what you could end up with are certain parcels being acquired, creating something that makes it much more unappealing to try and attempt to aggregate. And as I alluded to in my testimony, we have the need to grow. That's part of how we access more capital, it's part of how we justify continuing to be an independent automaker. We can either do that here in Penile County, or frankly, if we're unable to secure the land to even build upon, we have to look elsewhere in order to achieve that.
And, and since we're, we're asking the taxpayers to sort of go into business with Lucid, it's a discussion of Lucid's businesses on the table. I read, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that Lucid, $3.4 billion was, an investment was made by the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia and Lucid, and so they own a portion, do they own a portion of Lucid in that side of the globe?
So we're, we are registered on, on the NASDAQ Stock Exchange here in the U.S. We have investors ranging from the Sovereign Wealth Fund from the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia all the way down to retail investors.
Is that, is that a separate entity in Saudi Arabia, or is it Lucid on the whole? Is it a separate entity listed on the NASDAQ that the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia purchased, or is it simply the, the NASDAQ-listed stock?
It's the NASDAQ-listed stock, yeah.
Okay. That part I didn't see in the, in the article. Okay. I have no more questions.
All right. Excuse me. Mr. Chairman, just, I wanted to make sure, one of the things I, I talked about, and it might be premature, because I'm not sure if Mr. Reader will cover this, so if he didn't cover it, I wanted to make sure, because we talked about the, the lease payment, and the lease payment is to make sure that we cover as much as the debt service that we will be incurring for these bonds. So we have tried to structure the lease payment, again, getting the fair market rental lease that we would need to get via an appraisal, but also get that as close, if not more, to cover the, the bond cost. But hopefully, Mr. Reader will cover that. That's a cue for you, Mark.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Seeing none. Is this it? Okay. So in that case, no other questions? Supervisor Miller, you have?
Well, I was just going to say, this, we're approving the development agreement, is what we're approving at this point.
Yes.
Development agreement and the lease agreement. And the lease agreement, yeah.
Right. Okay. So any other questions? Supervisor Sertie, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Okay. In that case, I'd ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number two as presented. Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 4-1. All right. And item number three is a consideration of possible adoption of a resolution approving the sale and execution and delivery of pledged revenue obligations in one or more series. Mr. Reader, you're up. Mr. Liu, I believe you're mentioning here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the resolution that we were speaking of related to the public hearing that we discussed on May 18th. So Mr. Reader will reiterate some of the terms of the issuance, and then there'll be a vote on the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Liu. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon. As mentioned, my name is Mark Reader, I'm with Stifel Nicolaus, and as you know, we've been retained to assist you with underwriting of the bonds. Sorry for the frog in my throat. As you recall, we had a public hearing on this matter that is required for our counties with a population of less than 500,000. So as you recall, we had our public hearing. And if you recall, in connection with that public hearing, we had to make an estimate of the size of the bond issue, if you will, which at the time, we were, the county wasn't certain what the final acreage amount would be, and I don't think we had the final purchase price combination thereof. So in order to be conservative, as you recall, we sized the bond issued around 126 million. So the good news here is that the land acquisition has been sized at about $114 million. So we went ahead and then just resized all the math for you. So I just wanted to kind of give you that background. I think you're aware of that, but wanted to kind of give you that background as a reminder. So some of this, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, will be somewhat of a repeat of our public hearing. And as you recall, in that public hearing, we showed you kind of the debt structure. We shared with you the pledged revenues of the county in the second column. And as you know, the county's been doing very well financially with regard to your revenues. We shared with you the outstanding debt service of the county, which includes the 2018 Lucid transaction, which, as you know, we are in the process of paying off, and I think we're going to pay that off, as Mr. Keller said, in September. So that'll come off, come off the books through the repayment of... So, that'll come off the books through the repayment of that $30 million. We then took the $114 million, and we sized in columns four, five, and six, which is a longer-term amortization, really just designed to spread the debt service out, with really the focus of the financing being, as Mr. Keller and Mr. Lou mentioned to you, really the first four years. So, similar to the 2018 transaction, we're going to have a four-year call on this, call feature, which we expect that Lucid will go ahead and accept and repay us in four years, pay off the entire bond issue like they're doing with the 2018. And they've asked us to kind of structure the bond issue over the first four years, as you can see there in column six, at about, we'll have a partial year this year, as you can see there, at about $3.267 million, and then you can see the next four years after that, $7.1 million in annual payments. Now, the lease agreement that has been approved, it's my understanding, and Leo and Chris Keller can help me out on this, I want to say it's about $7.2 million, I think. I forgot what the exact lease payment was in the lease agreement, but the lease payments from Lucid, as mentioned previously, will be sufficient to make those payments in column six. So, the county is not expected to have any general fund budget impact, of course, as a result of this transaction, because of the agreements by and between the county and Lucid, the corporation. So, I wanted to just kind of give you an update in terms of the amount that we're looking at issuing, kind of how we're going to structure the bond issue. I've got two or three more slides, but can I answer any more questions relative to the proposed debt structure we're looking at?
Are there any questions?
So, moving on with that, this is what we shared with the board, and I wanted to give you a reminder of the various pledged revenues. Very common, as you all know, on all the previous transactions, and of course, all of the counties around the state utilize this same form of what we call pledged revenue obligations, where you just finished the year at about $72.2 million, very strong, and $21, $22, coming in from an estimated standpoint, about $83.7 million. So, good news with regard to the pledged revenues. As far as our timing is concerned, we are moving expeditiously. We're going to, with your approval today, we're going to move forward. We have some pretty important credit rating agency meetings next Thursday in connection with the issue for the county and of the transaction. So, we're preparing for those meetings. We expect to get some answers, as I indicate here, around July 11th, so the middle of July. And as we approach the 30-day requirement, because we're not able to sell bonds until 30 days after today pursuant to the statute, that we expect to be in the market and sell our taxable revenue bonds of the county towards the end of July or the first week of August. So, that really concludes my very, very brief remarks to the board, and I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have, and I hope that was helpful. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board? Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you.
Is that me?
Thank you. Sir, you mentioned that about $382,700,000 will be remaining in our debt after the current Lucid Motor loan is paid, and this will add approximately $125 million to that. And you mentioned that there's a meeting about our credit rating. Do you know what our current credit rating is?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, yes. The county is currently rated AA by Fitch and AA-minus by S&amp;P.
And what impacts those ratings?
When we meet with the rating agencies, they look at a variety of things. They look at the county finances, your budget, your liquidity, your cash reserves, all of which, as you know, at this point, is very, very strong. They look at the economy, they look at the Pinal County economy. They will ask us questions regarding the business transaction by and between the county and Lucid. They will ask for our development agreement, they'll ask for our lease agreement, and we can demonstrate to them that we've done a good job in terms of protecting the county as it relates to this transaction, so they'll look at that. They'll look at the amount of debt the county has, both your current debt, the debt that's coming off the books at the $30 million, and then they're going to look at the new $115 million roughly transaction that we're working on.
So, this transaction could negatively impact our credit rating?
We'll find out next week. If I had to guess on that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just because of the way the transaction has been structured, which has been measured, and I think the county's done a good job of protecting itself in the event of a situation, as Mr. Keller said, and with the strong financial condition of your county and your strong cash position, I don't really anticipate that, Mr. Kavanaugh. But we'll find out here in the next week to 10 days, but I won't anticipate that.
And with a AA or AA-minus rating, what's the next, if the county were to improve their rating to a AAA, how would that impact the county and the amount we would pay for debt?
Right. So, we're running our estimated numbers, obviously, at the AA range, which is where you're at now, obviously, and our goal always will be to upgrade the county's credit when we go to the credit markets. We work very, very, very hard at that. And to answer your question, that would be a AA-plus would be our next goal, to get that one-notch upgrade, and if we were to get two-notch upgrade, we would get into the AAA range. So, I respond to that.
And would it be for you to answer, the county manager, why is it that we're not at a AAA or AA-plus right now?
I'll go ahead and take that, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Lou. I would say that the county is doing an excellent job within your control of your economics and your financial policies and procedures, your management team, your debt load, your debt covenants, which was one other thing I meant to mention as it relates to this, which the county has very strong, what we call, debt covenants. And I would say the only thing that's probably holding us back is your economy is very strong with exceptional growth throughout the county. City of Maricopa, Santan, City of Casa Grande, Patchy Junction, generally, they will reserve those AAA ratings for the much larger, if you will, economies. Maricopa County, by way of example. So, I think it's just, as your economy continues to grow and improve and expand, and I think that could be down the road.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Supervisor Goodman.
And it might be towards staff than more, but Mark, you've been with us for some time, so maybe you could answer this as well. Would you say over the last 10 years, how much where we were to where we are today, can you kind of give us an idea where we've been in the past, where we are today?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Goodman, when I started back in 2009, we were an A-minus, and so, we have managed our way through the Great Recession, as well as some other elements, as we've continued to grow and invest in our economic base, really. And so, we've gotten to an A. So, from A-minus to an A, to an A-plus, to a AA, AA-minus, which is pretty remarkable, I think, to the previous question. When the reporting agencies issue these reports, and in the past reports, you can see, they will categorize revenue framework, expenditure framework, risk volatility related to those. They'll categorize management of operations, things that would bind our expenditures, like if we had a collective bargaining agreement with a labor union that had certain terms in it that we were held to, things like that effect. But back to what Mr. Reader was saying, when it comes to revenue volatility and sensitivity, if we have a diversified economic base with strong industrial and diversity within that, as well as commercial, that is going to reduce the potential volatility to that revenue. So, in a sense, our investment in a project like this is a part of what is executing our long-term strategy to increase this AA to a AA-plus and eventually a AAA.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for that report.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right. I would ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number three as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. This does require a roll call vote, and I would start with Supervisor Miller. Supervisor Goodman.
Aye.
Supervisor Sertie.
Aye.
Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Nay.
Supervisor McClure. Oh, that's me. Motion passes 4-1. And that seems to be the end of the meeting, so we are adjourned. Thank you.